All right, we're gonna go ahead and start the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, February 3rd, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Here in the City Council chambers, our invocation tonight will be from Pastor Darryl Friday from the Abundant Life Christian Center. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on, brother.
Father, we come before you tonight. Father, we take this time to worship you, to give you all glory, all praise, all honors to you. Now, Father, I ask you to grant these members of this body the wisdom and the knowledge that they need to lead, to guide, to direct our fair city. That, Father, that they will have the wisdom to make the decisions that are necessary to bring forth health, to bring forth safety to our community, to guide it, to financially direct it wisely. We ask this in the name of Jesus. And, Father, as we stand here, my prayer is for this council and for this city that the awakening that is needed in our area would awaken to you, that, Father, that this community will turn back to you as our Lord and as our God, and that peace and safety will reign in our community. And that, Father, we also pray for the healing of our nation. Father, that we will become one people under God, not divided, but united as Americans, as people united, not united in color, in race, in faith. And, Father, now we just give you the glory, the honor, the praise that is due you, and we ask this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Wonderful. Thank you, Pastor Friday. We appreciate that.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys.
Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Boyer?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Massingham?
Here.
Councilman Depew?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Here.
Mayor Cornman?
Here.
We have seven present.
Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed in a previous meeting. Seeing none, item six, citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none, item seven, swearing in of our new city manager. City Clerk Lori Phelps will administer the oath of office to newly appointed city manager Robert Nodel.
I, Robert Nodel.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the State of Missouri.
And that of the State of Missouri.
And of the ordinances of the City of Popper Bluff.
And of the ordinances of the City of Popper Bluff.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city manager.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city manager.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Of said city to the best of my ability. Thank you. Good.
All right, item eight, workshop items for discussion. Item A, the City Council will consider authorizing the mayor to enter into a grant award agreement with the Delta Regional Authority for Project MO-7561 relative to improvements to Butts and Drive and Popper Bluff Industrial Park. Manager Nodel, two present.
Yes, appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. We're very excited that this grant was awarded to us by the Delta Regional Authority in the amount of $1.9 million to make much-needed improvements to Butts and Drive. I have received in my short time here ample feedback that certainly the heavy traffic on that road, as it relates to the industrial park, has created, you know, some very significant needs for repairs of that thoroughfare. This has been an issue for many years in the factories and other businesses in the industrial park. We very much appreciate us proceeding. The city's contribution to this will be $219,938 in in-kind work.
I make a motion, move this to the voting session to be held Friday, I mean, February 19th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the City Council will consider authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission for grant administrative services for the Delta Regional Authority Grant Project MO-7561 relative to improvements to Butts and Drive in the Popper Bluff Industrial Park. Manager Nodel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the same project as was previously voted on, but this agreement is for grant administrative services with Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission for the Delta Regional Authority Butts and Drive Grant Project. Administrative services fees are not covered by the grant funds. This was discussed by the council back in the fall informally, and consensus was it would be money well spent for the city to pay this out of pocket if we were selected to receive the grant funds, which we have been. Their rate is $55 an hour with a cap of 200 hours for a total not to exceed $11,000.
I make a motion, move this to the voting session to be held February 19th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the City Council will consider an offer to purchase property owned by the City of Popper Bluff and located between the Popper Bluff Police Department and Copper Top Foot and Ankle Clinic. Manager Nodel.
Yes, this is an item that was discussed last time in the closed session. It is for the property between the police department and the Copper Top Foot and Ankle that was, that a full appraisal offer of $25,000 was received. They now have a deed ready for a legal description. It does not have deed restrictions on it, but certainly we're going to be in conversations with our city attorney relative to this, and this is a workshop item only for Monday. So, you know, the hope would be if this moves forward that we could iron out the details of the deed before it would go to a vote at the second meeting in February.
Make a motion, move this.
I got a couple of comments. I'd like to add to what was discussed before. You know, this property is between the police station and the business. The business wants a portion of that for their parking lot, which is about 25 feet. So, the property was appraised, can we say the amount?
It was $25,000.
$25,000 for a strip big enough for a line of parking on the back of the building. So, if we did that, my feeling is that that would cut off, it would split that lot. The remaining lot would be smaller, and it would restrict somewhat what could be used on, that lot could be used for in the future. So, now, a certain, you know, a business could be put in there, which would have access to both PP Highway and Shelby Road. And so, I'm thinking that that strip, that appraisal is only for that strip, for the parking lot. It doesn't have anything to do with what the value of the lot would be as a whole if it were not split. So, we don't really know what the value of the lot is, if it's, you know, before it's being split. I would think we'd want to know that, and also, before we split it, I would think we'd want to know if there was any interest in that for someone to build a business in there. And if there is no, if there is no interest in it, then, you know, we could then say, well, we could split it. The police department says that they don't have any current or future use for it, but that could always change. If it's too small for another business or something to move in there, then, you know, maybe it's just kept as open space in back of the police station. If that's the case, then we should probably be maintaining that lot as we ask the other residents in town or our property owners in town to maintain their lot and cut the grass. This property is just weeds, and we're not maintaining it. And so, it's a poor example for us not maintaining city-owned property to ask people to maintain their empty lots, like, you know, cutting the grass. So, there's a lot of issues here, I think, that are unresolved, and I'd like to have, I'd like to have those issues discussed further and have those resolved to some result before we go ahead and vote on splitting this and selling it. I know it would be an advantage to that business if they want it, you know, for that parking lot, maybe they need to buy the whole lot, you know? So, I mean, there's just a lot of unknowns here, in my opinion.
Get a motion?
A second.
Did you finish your motion, Mark?
I make a motion, move it to the February 19th voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the City Council will consider authorizing the submission of a grant application to the fiscal year 2025 Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development Build Grant Program relative to the Highway 67 I-57 project. Bill Robinson from Smith &amp; Company is here to present.
Please turn that mic on.
Yeah, you might need to turn that mic on, Bill.
I switch.
Pull the button up.
Right here's the switch on.
Yeah.
There we go.
Thank you.
We're live now.
I will pass out a, kind of a diagram.
Okay.
Just to kind of show some of the corridor and then where this build grant is actually being applied to, so.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Professionally done submittal, not what we normally get to see.
We'll just teach you about it.
Wonder what you've been coloring all week. That's a nice overview. Really big.
Yes.
You do good with crayons.
This is kind of an overview that we've been using through the years that begins to paint a picture, if you will, of where we're at. You can see near the top, you know, 160, and then the Arkansas line at the bottom. So, as we've applied for and received some of the cost shares, you know, since 2019, those would be labeled. Phase 1A was the governor's cost share. That was the improvements that were made to the 160 interchange. With COVID, you know, there was some craziness, and things got kind of pushed back from what we would have liked, but in the end, Phase 1B in orange and Phase 2 are now under construction. HR Quadry is building those as we speak. Talking to Mark, and if you've been down there lately, you'll see clearing and things have been done, and the utilities have been moved out, and so that construction will start, you know, this spring when it dries up. So, that's, those are all underway. You'll see kind of a purply-blue, it says "Grant Application." That would be, the phases, I'll just say, got kind of messed up with COVID, so we ended up with some 1As and 1Bs, and so we're calling this Phase 3A because the grant was for a specific amount. It had a $25 million maximum, so we applied for the maximum amount of federal money that we could. So, that piece is the grant application before you tonight. And then, you know, at Phase 3B is still, you know, there's not a lot happening on that at this time. Phase 4, towards the end, you'll begin to see and hear more probably on that with the funding that we received last session, got approved. We are moving forward with the project on the south end, which that, in, you know, working with MoDOT is in conjunction with Arkansas, so it makes sense. They have a project right now at Corning, the Corning Bypass, they call it. So, that Corning Bypass, they have a contractor, and that's about a little over five-mile project that will, if you're familiar with, there's a curve as you go, kind of getting towards Corning. It's the last curve before Corning, so somewhere, you know, that road will kind of veer off, and it'll end up over between Corning and the airport. So, you'll see work out that way, and then up towards the rest area. It's a pretty, a pretty good-sized project. I think their contract on that was around 55 million. So, their, that work is going on as, at the same time as these projects I just talked, Phase 1B and Phase 2. So, their remainder is, their next project will be on the same schedule as this Phase 4 that we're looking at. We're going to use, the plan is use that state money, some of that state money to get Phase 4 to work with Arkansas's next phase. So, there won't be, I don't really anticipate one state project and then imaginary line drawn. I think they're going to be working all that together. I know MoDOT is meeting with Arkansas. The project teams are meeting very regularly on that, so that will be kind of happening. So, that's kind of an overview of what's happening in the corridor. You know, my, a lot of people ask about timeframes, you know, and I, I see probably, you know, this active contracts in Arkansas and Missouri, you know, 18 months, you know, ish, plus or minus. I'm not looking at contracts, I'm just kind of sharing my gut. So, after that, I think the projects towards the, near the state line, probably summer of '26 construction, give them a couple of years. So, my take is in probably five, the next five years, I think those projects will be done. I'm hoping in that time period this raise grant comes through. There's been a lot of the legwork, as you guys know, the environmental, a lot of the stuff, steps have been taken to make this happen, so if we would get the funding, I think the construction and the design and construction would happen pretty quickly. So, that's kind of where that is. I mean, the 10, five-to-10-year mark, I would hope, I would hope that, you know, in five-to-six, we're done in Missouri, for sure, and then probably in that six-to-10, Arkansas is getting to Walnut Ridge. I mean, that's kind of, that's a big, that's about a 30-plus mile project, so that's a big project. They are very committed to the project. I think they do have funding for right-of-way acquisition for some of that, so I think zero to five, I believe they're going to be acquiring right-of-way. They're planning, they're working on, they have active contracts on design, so things like that are going to be happening in that zero to five. I'm hopeful in that five-to-10 that we can see construction from Corning to Walnut Ridge. Things are, yeah, things are exciting, it's exciting. I did want to share. I know some, you know, you guys were invited to the, when we had the governor here, and it was an exciting time. He signed the bill for us, and, you know, our current governor was here as well, so it's kind of a unique experience, I think, for us in southeast Missouri that we want to honor our previous governor and all the work he did for us, but then also, we need to be thankful, thankful that, you know, our current governor and what he's doing for us in the corridor. So, both of them have signed this, so I want that, give you guys, and hopefully, you know, put it up somewhere in the City Hall or something, you know? And this one, you know, is the governor's, Governor Parsons' tattoo that he has, so that's kind of a cool thing. So, you got Governor Mike Parsons, G-57, you got Mike Keough here, you got Lincoln Huff here, and there's a lot of others. You know, you got Hardy. I mean, I've, I would encourage, you know, next time, have Hardy sign these, and Senator Bean, and Representative Parker, and others that, you know, that have been a part of it. It's a team effort. I mean, it takes, it takes a team. So, I know Robert's probably not a stranger to the project, so it's, it's taken all of us pulling the same direction, and I think that's kind of what's cool about the project. It's like Arkansas, Missouri, we're all on board with making things better for northeast Arkansas and southeast Missouri. That's really what it boils down to. This one, there's not a whole lot of them. This one's been signed by G-57. It's also been signed by Arkansas 47, so that's kind of cool. Sarah Huckabee and Mike Parsons, so you can, I was not responsible for getting those signatures. If somebody wants to know, I'll tell you later.
Very nice.
It's a cool thing, and I'm excited to hand these off. I even brought a little, you know, tripod.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
And thanks for the detailed description. I think it really helped us tonight kind of understand, you know, and it kind of brings it to light, and that means a lot for us, too, so.
I think the, you know, I brought some other displays, you know, the big, the big-picture view, which it's easy to lose sight of, is the flow of traffic in our country and how that. I got one man, I can't get, can't get out without a man, multiple mans, so. I mean, when you look at the freight movement, this is how freight flows in our country. So, you begin to see where we're at in relation to where the freight wants to be in our country. And I think that's where this corridor really begins to make sense. You know, we're sort of feeling that if you drive down to Coconamas or you're driving to the state line even, you know, it's not going to be, we're not, we're just a little bit of red line here. You know, we're not I-40 between Little Rock and Memphis, you know? But can we move vehicles from Little Rock to St. Louis quicker than this with four lanes? Can we get them from Little Rock to Popper Bluff to Chappellia quicker than this? So, it's, begin to check boxes that, you know, are important for moving the goods in the country, and that's really what this is about. And then, as I've said before, I mean, if you travel to Houston, Texas for any reason, which I have had to do that in the past 10 years, there's no good way to get there. You know, my in-laws went to Memphis once and then took I-40 across, and they said they'd never do that again. You have 21,000 vehicle trucks a day, trucks a day on that section of road between Little Rock and Memphis. 21,000 trucks, over 50% of the vehicles are semi, so we have about 9,000, 10,000 on I-7. We have about 9,000 or 10,000 on I-55 south of Sykesville, so.
21,000.
Yeah, there's a lot of trucks, so anyway, hopefully it's affordable.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
That was great.
Bill, just a question about, I guess, not 67, but I-57. What kind of movements going on between Popper Bluff and Sykesville as far as funding and progress?
I know we've done a ton of work over here. Yes, the Sykesville to Popper Bluff, you know, is, it comes up a fair amount, a lot of interest, you know, locally. I think, I think everybody's still on the same page, and Sykesville has been, and Dexter both, I mean, we're, this is a, when I say a team, this is, this is a team. I mean, you'll see that, you know, they were at these events, you know, and they've been at our events, and that team understands that we've got to get, for this thing to work, we got to get the two lane upgraded to four lane. I mean, that's really the priority. You know, there's four lane between here and Sykesville. There's spotted interchanges, you know, Dudley, Fisk, you know? The Dexter to Sykesville is going to be more of a challenge, I think, because it doesn't have as many of those spot interchange improvements. But our real focus has got to be on getting the two lane, and we don't want to create any kind of, you know, if we start talking about that and then we begin to get things, get folks confused, well, what is your priority? You know, you're talking about something here, and I thought this was your, you know? And so, we've been, so far, we've been pretty lockstep, you know, as far as everybody, you know, we got to get this two lane upgraded to four lane, and that's, that's been our focus. There's been some discussion about the interstate status, you know, and we're future interstate, but Arkansas last fall actually removed the word "future," and so now, from Little Rock to Walnut Ridge, it is Interstate 57. It is designated, signed off, everybody 100% I-57. So, I've looked on a couple different Google navigation sites, and both of them pulled up, oh, that's south of Walnut Ridge, it shows the I-57 shield. So, that is a big deal, and we need to keep fighting for the interstate. It's a one, I view it as a one-time shot. I mean, this is our chance to get it like, get it right and make it like it needs to be. I mean, I drove on 64 years since I was 16, and always wondered, well, what are those outer roads, or what are those, the piles, you know, that look smooth out there and it's never been done, you know? But we need to, we need to stay on it and make sure it gets done the right way. So, anyway.
Well, I appreciate it. I know all of us did all your hard work, because I know you picked up where Mr. Lawson left off, and you've come a long way since then, so.
Yes, I miss Tom Lawson, I can tell you. He said, "Bill, this is Tom." Yeah, I know, Tom. I knew it was you when the phone rang.
Thanks for this. This really clarifies a lot how this is going. Some of the folks that I talked to, there's some confusion about from here to the Arkansas line, about how this is going, and why it's in so many phases. They thought that the governor's appropriation was going to complete that with that appropriation, but how does, what's being paid for out of that, the governor's appropriation from MoDOT, and what's being paid for by, it looks like this section in the middle is not covered, and it's, we're applying for a grant.
Yes, we're applying for grants, and they're, you know, the state appropriations were for $100 million, $150 million, which was the total amount. I mean, that is, that's what the grant was for, to, so.
And that's not enough to complete it?
No, it is.
It is.
It is. We're not, we're not saying that. The key, I believe, is 67 North is a good example. I mean, it takes. I mean, it takes, the idea of all this to me is some, some, some local money, some more state money and federal money. Those are kind of the, you need local, state and federal. And right now, we have not gotten the federal. So I think that's where we're working with MoDOT. So this grant application, this build grant, we actually have the MoDOT, a letter of support from the MoDOT director, which is a good thing. So they're, they are supportive.
And will that require an additional appropriation from the state?
It will, it will leverage additional funds. So I think the state, again, the state funding gets leveraged with federal funding and create, helps, I guess, grow the, the state economy.
So the, the Phase 3A grant is a federal grant?
That's 100% federal, yeah.
And that's not a matching requirement?
No. So the only, the only commitment, like, so for, for Phase 1A, this started out as, as a governor's cost share in 2019. So we had Phase 1 and Phase 2. And we applied for those cost share projects and we were awarded those two projects. But then with COVID, COVID hit and everything got moved around. But the city's portion commitment, if you will, is, is only for Phase 1A, Phase 1B and Phase 2. That make, that's been the, there's a loan that the city has and we're, the city's paying a portion to MoDOT. So that, that is where the cities, that makes sense.
Okay, and we don't have a commitment or won't have a commitment from there on down to Arkansas? That was some of the questions I was getting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for that.
There's a loan agreement on that and there's no.
I'm glad you're on this. This is, this is very complicated. I appreciate, I appreciate your clarification.
It is complicated, but, you know, I'm, I'm as ready as anybody to see it done. So, you know, it's worth the fight, but it is, when you end up with multiple funding sources in a project, a small project can turn into a major when you end up with multiple funding sources. So any other questions, comments? I mean, I'd be happy to.
Thank you for that.
Yep. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it, Bill.
I make a motion. We move this to tonight's voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9, action required items AA, Bill number 8608. City council will take action on an ordinance approving a request from the Black River Coliseum for the disposal of antiquated records.
Motion for first reading of Bill number 8608? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records by the Papa Bluff Black River Coliseum.
Make a motion for second reading.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records by the Papa Bluff Black River Coliseum.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Bill number 8608 has been adopted. BB, Bill number 8609, the city council will take action on an ordinance approving change order number three relative to the Papa Bluff ARPA Stormwater Project.
Motion for first reading of Bill number 8609? Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number three relating to the Papa Bluff Stormwater American Rescue Plan Act project.
Motion for second reading.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number three relating to the Papa Bluff Stormwater American Rescue Plan Act project.
Motion for adoption of Bill number 8609? Seconded.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Bill number 8609 has been adopted. CC, Bill number 8610, the city council will take action on an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2024 budget for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for first reading of Bill number 8610? Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for a second reading.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption.
Seconded.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Bill number 8610 has been adopted. DD, Bill number 8611, the city council will take action on an ordinance adopting a safety policy for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for first reading of Bill number 8611? Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, adopting a safety policy for all employees of the city of Papa Bluff.
Make a motion for a second reading of 8611.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, adopting a safety policy for all employees of the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption of Bill number 8611? Seconded.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Bill number 8611 has been adopted. EE, Resolution 2049, city council will take action on a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the fiscal year 2025 Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development, the build grant, program relative to the Highway 67 I-57 project.
Motion for reading of Resolution 2049? Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Papa Bluff, authorizing the city to submit a grant application to the United States Department of Transportation, Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development Grant Program for Phase 3A of Highway 67 Interstate 57 Project.
Make a motion for adoption.
Seconded.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Resolution number 2049 has been adopted. Item 10, our city manager's report, city manager, Robert Nodel.
Yes, very, very brief this evening, but certainly want to thank the council for the opportunity to serve this great city and citizens. I want to extend special thanks to our department directors here in the city that have been very gracious with their time in terms of bringing me up to speed on city operations. Also, very much thank the team at the city hall that has been very welcoming and accommodating throughout this transition. Obviously, a special shout out to, to our city clerk and assistant city manager, Lori Phelps, who's been incredibly patient and accommodating with me. But initially, you know, our focus is on city services and the delivery of those services with excellence, with courtesy and with efficiency. And, you know, we believe that if we can take that provision to the next level, it is going to give us the, the confidence and the momentum that we need to, you know, to chase even greater growth and advancement here in the city. So look forward to continuing to spend time with members of the council as well as stakeholders across our community to, to learn what I can do to be a force multiplier for the agenda that, that the voters of this council expect.
Thank you, Robert, for that. Also, Thursday night is at 6 o'clock.
Five to seven.
Oh, five to seven. Okay, so five to seven, right here in the Coliseum lobby, we're going to do a meet and greet for Robert. So anybody out there in the public, I guess, that wants to come out and meet Robert, that's the time to do it. So, and then the last thing, before we adjourn, we want to recognize a couple of people. Clerk Vernon, can you come up, please? And also Clerk Phelps, we've got some recognition awards here for you. We're going to go right down there. Bill, can we just?
Photographer Bill. You're a jack of all trades.
I didn't see anything on that. I don't get most emails, I don't know how to email this. I'm looking disappointed about all these awards that quit doing the yearly thing with the city council.
All right, guys, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being adjourned.